In order, roll call please.
Colston.
Yes.
Conrad.
President.
Feltus.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Sinsala.
Yeah.
Mazek.
Yes.
Warum, pledge allegiance please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Verification, Colston?
I was posted on the third street of May in City Hall, St. Arcadia, Arcadia TV and Lions and you said you were.
We have a twelve item agenda, the only thing I'd like to do is move this corrosion up a little closer to the top on eight. To eight, eight, otherwise I'd entertain.
Son of a.
Second. Conrad, second, and Mazek. How it's questions? Clerk will call their own.
Conrad.
Yes.
Feltus.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Sinsala.
Yeah.
Mazek.
Yes.
Colston.
Yes.
Motion carries, public comment? Public comment? Public comment? Here none will move on, old business approval meeting minutes. On May first, motion by Feltus is our second.
Second.
By Mazek. Questions? Clerk will call their own.
Feltus.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Sinsala.
Yeah.
Mazek.
Yes.
Colston. Conrad.
Yes.
Motion carries, item four B, discussion approval of special event agreement between the city of Arcadia and Arcadia Lions Club.
Son of a.
Something that was discussed at last.
Second.
Second by Sinsala. I think we all know what's in there, nothing's changed, Bill, other than.
Uh, there's that credit amount of, uh.
It was like seventy-five hundred dollars or whatever that.
Uh, I believe it was up to nine thousand.
Nine thousand, seventy-five hundred with the reduction in police. Or whatever it is. Any other questions?
I still think we should do something about the police department.
Meaning?
On the road.
Meaning having the Lions Club pay for it?
Pay for some of that or.
We can work with them the whole time, we'll have another year to work with.
I'd like to see if discuss the, of how much policing we really need. We can, we can certainly bring it up, if I want to bring it up.
Okay, beginning of June. Start discussing for next year.
Following this year's brother.
Well, I remember so what it was.
Yeah, I asked Diana to give each of you guys a report of what we currently have on a Friday through Sunday night. And then give us a. Summation of what every year Brother Days water plant called Boston's just this. So there's something there. You should get that on next day or two. Any other questions? Clerk will call their own.
Anderson.
Yes.
Sinsala.
Yeah.
Mazek.
Yes.
Colston.
Yes.
Yes.
Feltus.
Absolutely. Motion carries, utility commission. Mr. Potts.
So what are we doing here on this one?
This is an update, uh, I put that song there.
I thought this was, you were gonna talk on this too. Well, I could.
If you want to give an update on the, what you're doing on the electrical side, I can kind of fill in on the water wastewater side.
Okay. So we're right now, we're getting ready for Brother Days, um, flags and banners and we check every outlet, every light in the park. That takes. We've got a week's worth of time there with at least one guy. We had a, we had to put a new service, or replace a service in Schultz Park, or Schultz Court that burned out, or burned up last week. Working on some Ashley for the Arts stuff, we removed three of the tractor pole lights, um, depending on what you're, you guys decide here, or this table decides, we're gonna have a lot more work to get ready for Ashley for the Arts. Guys actually go through with what their wishes are.
That'll be at upcoming meetings, I think. Right enough. The right comes up soon, back in June.
So just today, we unloaded our twelve, twelve thousand volt breaker for the solar farm that's being built on the other side of town. We're gonna be taking that substation out of service next week for about three days to get that breaker tied in to our system. We've got a guy coming from Oshkosh on Monday to assist Dave Crowsey and us in doing that. Doing some pole change outs, J and R Underground was here for a couple of days, um, they're the ones that helped us replace that service in Schultz Court, a couple of streetlight drills, uh, directional drills, the two that you approved up by the swimming pool. And we're getting geared up for a pretty good sized upgrade of our system at the main sewer lift station. The new service to the school addition, that's a, that's a pretty good sized project for us, we've got the transformer. Just ordered about forty thousand dollars worth of wire for some aging infrastructure upgrades in the Ashley core area. Nick just finished his third year of apprentice school, he's got one year left, Kyle finished his first year of his metering apprentice school, he's got two years left. Andy Conkle will start his first year this fall, so we'll have three apprentices in school at the same time for this next apprentice school year. The electric utility and the water and wastewater utilities sent two, we each sent two guys to a, a tree and a chainsaw training seminar up at Chipotle Falls that was actually sponsored by our insurance company. Comments that came back, very good. One guy that doesn't throw comments or compliments out very often, had a really good compliment on that training. Um, we did our switching, we call it our GOAB maintenance work, our gang operated air brake switches, that was about two weeks worth of work we did not too long ago, all the overhead switches that we have in town, we probably got about fifteen of them, we just went through and made sure they were all working the way they're supposed to, we had to do quite a few adjustments. You know, in our long range plan, our long range budget, our almost twenty year old bucket truck is up for replacement, uh, the next couple of years and we're just continuing to try and figure out what our wants and needs are there. It's a pretty big expenditure for us. You know, and I guess just going back in time just a little bit, you guys know with the high water, you know, the amount of time that we spent with all of that stuff. The Ashley Plan Four Transformer that failed in September, we had a spare, we got that in and, um, about a month and a half ago, we put the new one in and, and a new switch alongside of it, that was actually, that whole process was part of the, uh, our five to seven year Ashley core area infrastructure upgrade, so, um, that part's crossed off. And I guess just trying to keep the lights on.
And the air conditioner ready?
You know, the more you run it, the better, we like it.
Let's see if it works.
Fix the meter spin. What's there to talk about?
Butter solar, I mean, I know we're talking about it later, but that's just for, uh, building, when was that gonna be online?
So their projected date was June first, but I think it's gonna be closer to the mid, middle of June, latter part of June. I think that, I should say, I think, some of the weather conditions that we had throughout the winter slowed them down a bit.
A little slippery, didn't have that, yeah?
Uh, yeah, snow.
Do you think because of that field being there, there will ever be any more interest for other people to put them in this area, or?
Well, I don't know, you know, you got Ashley Furniture looking at it right now, I just met with them, you know, on their rooftops, I just met with them on Monday with some of their engineers and the, the solar company that they're dealing with, you know, a lot of, there's a lot of interest out there. But then right now, there's government incentives to do it as well, you know, there's that window of opportunity, like the window of opportunity that is about to expire for the wind turbines, you know, you saw so many of them going up in a period of time, now that, that incentive has sort of shifted towards solar, so, it could be. I don't know if that answered your question?
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm just curious if other people are thinking about doing it.
Well, I think probably the biggest thing, you correct me if I'm wrong, is just having the close to the utility or substation get hooked into a, the system, right, the grid, I mean, helps reduce the cost, which makes it more beneficial for a farmer or something like that, if he'd wanna, wanna do it, correct?
Well, you know, there's a lot of different ways to do it, but this solar farm that's being built right now, I mean, that's a pretty good size, that's gonna be a pretty good size output relative to, you know, a small farm, solar panel, but the beauty of this, along with this breaker that I just mentioned, there's a twelve, uh, twelve thousand volt line that goes from that solar array right into our substation.
So we buy direct from them?
We're, we're buying it right off of that generator.
That's what it generates. Produce roughly ten percent of the cities?
Yeah, it'll, it'll produce that or maybe just a little bit less.
Do we get the green credits?
Nope. Nope. Organic Valley, the, uh, the one that started this whole thing, where they're the ones that came to us, they wanted the, the green credits, we just wanted the energy. And would also, that made the energy pricing attractive to us, because there's no credits that go with it, we actually have excess credits, we sell credits.
I didn't know that.
So this, so I guess, cut me off, but I'm out of time here, with this wind contract that we've got in North Dakota that we started in two thousand and twelve, that comes with a ton of credits, and we sell it on the market, our, our UMAE group. So we don't need them, that's what made this, this solar farm attractive for us.
We need, we needed the energy.
Yeah.
We're always short on energy.
Yeah, we were, we were short.
Well, the cool part of the energy that we, that's coming off of this, we know what the price is for the next twenty years. That's in the contract, and what it does is that, you know, the market for electricity is like this, you know, it's been like that forever, and with that, you know, with that, you know, especially with the large customers that we've got, you know, even though that, you know, their consumption may be flat. You know, their bill from us goes like this, but when you've got something like this, solar farm that's consistent price for twenty, twenty-five years, and that wind contract that we've got in North Dakota, that's a locked in price for twenty-five years, that kind of smoothes out this, even though it's a small, a small percentage of our wholesale power supply portfolio, it helps shave those peaks. I could keep it going.
How much of our power comes from North Dakota?
What's that?
What percentage comes from North Dakota?
Uh, twenty.
Twenty, fifteen.
This will be about ten percent, so at the end of the day, when we close that breaker that we just took delivery of today, we will be at about thirty percent renewables. That's pretty, that's a large number.
Well, and like you said, considering, you know, we have a lot of large consumers, it's just not a, you know, a three thousand, a lot of industry that uses a lot of electricity.
Right, you know, and it's, a lot of people really, you know, the, the renewable part is a very attractive, people really want to hear that. And I, I get that, but for us, or for me looking at it, the ability to smooth out those, those ups and downs with that consistent twenty year locked in price is a big deal.
Well, I mean, it makes you, you're in your own budget or your business budget, not worried about what utility's gonna charge you for electricity.
They make dirt and dirt for no contract.
They have.
Any other questions? Thanks, Tim.
So I'll give some updates in regards to the water and the wastewater, I'm not gonna go into as much detail.
Sorry, I took your time, Bill.
No, you're good. So in regards to the, the water utility, utility, well, number seven is coming along, I think that they're nearing, uh, the completion for that well and then starting to enter into the testing phase. Uh, with that being said, once it is tested and meets requirements, uh, they will move on to demolish, uh, uh, demolitioning well number group. And then, uh, one, once that is completed, there will be some land there that will be re-located back to the city, um, I believe there's enough there for two lots, two residential lots and the right of way for an extension of some some in the future. So, keep your ear out, you know, eyes out for that, it should come to the council. And probably recommendation by the, uh, plan commission on what to do with that property. On the wastewater side, we, we continue to, um, well, my, my Davey and Davey engineering just submitted the city's, uh, wastewater quality, um, trade plan to, um, the DNR, so there's been, um, an increase or a heightened, um, requirement for the amount of phosphorus from our, uh, point source. And to meet that, uh, requirement, um, the utility has chosen to, to go about it, uh, in two methods, one is by constructing a clarifier and that project is ongoing, I believe they hit some delay due to the winter, winter conditions. But they are moving forward on that, and then the second part of that, uh, project, of being a phosphorus requirement is to, uh, find projects that we can trade for credit. Uh, so one of the projects that we are currently looking at and was, was recently bid, uh, was on the Supla Farm, was to the south of, um, Arcadia here. And the city is, uh, the utility is now also looking for another project in order to meet all of the, the credits that we need.
What, what is the project on the Supla Farm, if I may ask?
It is, um, stream bank, restoration, regroup, clearing, um.
And that allows us to, to put more phosphorus into the river?
It, so, um.
Offsets there.
Offsets the amount of phosphorus that we put in the river.
And what kind of money is being spent on that project?
Well, right now, they're estimated, uh, at about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's just that one project, now, it is estimated that to meet the rest of what we need, that price will increase per credit. Uh, well, that price will increase, right now, it's about a hundred and, they figure a hundred, with that project, it's about a hundred and seventy dollars per credit. We're gonna see that price increase with other projects, um, as credits are getting more expensive. I believe, um, the number of credits that we need to be able to obtain is like in the three thousand, so two thousand, it's a high number, two thousand eight hundred.
What, what is our requirement? By the DNR, from the phosphorus levels we're at now, putting into the river compared to what we need to be at?
Oh, I don't know the answer to that.
It's like se- seventy, we had to cut it by what, like seventy percent, I would say?
It was a large number.
And the clarifier only brought us?
Well, I think the, the clarifier is gonna, you know, we have, we have, we have, we're about sixty percent of the way that we, we need to get, and then, um, but, I don't know the exact numbers.
So more or less, we'll be buying credits forever, because there's no way that we can get down to a tolerable level?
Yeah, so the credits are good for a num, a number of years, and then at that point, depending on what the, the demand of phosphorus is in the city, so, so say for example, if we have a phosphorus limit, we, you know, we pour so much phosphorus into the river at this time.
Right.
So the, the quality, the water quality trade project and the clarifier project that we have currently will get us to that amount, now, if we have a large industry that comes in, that's gonna require more phosphorus, we then need to go out and find more projects, or a, a way to deal with that phosphorus. So we're always chasing.
Do we have any idea where all the phosphorus is coming from?
Oh. We do. We have, and it's coming from our industry and our residential users, I don't know what percentage. That's all built into our, our wastewater, uh, agreements.
Would Gary know that?
Gary should know that.
Maybe we should have him come to a meeting on.
Well, we can arrange for that.
Just one quick thing that I should mention, if you're done. So I was at a Darrell and Power meeting two weeks ago and I was able to hold my head pretty high when they, they made a, a presentation about the cold weather we had this winter and when they, when the Midwest Independent System Operator declared an emergency and had us generate, so they had a list of all the utilities on this, on this projection, or this, uh, what they were showing us, and there weren't a lot of utilities that could do exactly what they've said they could do, there weren't a lot of generators that, that put out in full, there were some that wouldn't start at all, but Arcadia's did exactly what they were supposed to do. So that's a compliment to Scott and Andy. It was pretty cool to see that, I was able to sit up a little taller right there.
It was good, good to see, 'cause it's easy to write it on a piece of paper, but when you actually have to do it.
Yeah.
Makes a big difference. Anything else, Bill?
Oh, that's it.
Anything on the city administrator's side?
Uh, yeah, I just want to run down some of the large projects that we have ongoing or will be upcoming, uh, just so that this table is aware of where we are. Um, so in regards to the US Economic Development Administration Internal Greenwich Project, um, the mayor, um, Alderman Feltus, myself, um, Angela and Terry Madden, um, including Strand and associates had met in Chicago with, um, EDA, and we went through their training. Uh, right now, we are set up to move forward on, in that project, uh, we currently are working with, um, Terry Madden to get the proper real estate documents, uh, entitled documents submitted to EDA. Um, that is something that they require before we move on to the, the planning and design phase, uh, we do have set up tomorrow to meet with Strand and the utilities and street, uh, and storm to discuss, uh, planning for the upcoming project. Um, just to make sure that we're all on the same page and to get them nice and comfortable, because it would be my last meeting with you guys there. But that, that project is expected to move forward, um, Angela and I have a meeting with Sean Lenz, our financial advisor, to discuss, uh, financial planning for the city's local share, uh, for that project. Um, and if everything goes well, that project, uh, should go out to bid at the end of this year into next year. With that being said, the CDPG application for this project has been submitted or sent, um, and so we should hear about that midsummer, figuring around July. In regards to the US Army Core Levy Project, uh, in speaking with them, I believe they are still on schedule, they have the draft copy of the feasibility study to the city for engineering review, um, in August here, uh, once it is reviewed, it will go through, uh, quality control and then come back for a public hearing, uh, right around December, January. Most of you or, or some of you may have seen in the newspaper that, uh, there was a letter submitted to joint finance from Governor Evers supporting this project, uh, and, and asking that the funding for this project be moved or continued into this com, upcoming by, so, we do have support from both sides of the aisle on this project, it's a matter of how it's gonna get into the final budget, so. We'll continue to track that, and when I say we, most of us, Terry and, and, and the mayor. Um, in addition to that, uh, so right now, it's at the finance committee, uh, Terry, myself, and Rob, we've prepared a, a resolution to the county, so the county may adopt that, it's a part of this. Last week, the mayor, myself, uh, Alderman Feltus, and, uh, Gary Bouch, who serves on the utility commission and plan commission, also met with, uh, we met with the town representatives and, in regards to Gabney Road, and their commission or their committee representatives included Richard Shink, Donna Brogan and Dave Liga, uh, in, in discussing, uh, Gabney Road, um, reconstruction. Um, at this point, uh, the group has decided, uh, that the next logical step would be to get some borings, uh, and find out what the, the base and subbase material look like. Uh, with that being said, we do continue to work on that agreement with them to split the cost for Gabney Road fifty-fifty. We're right now kind of going back and forth in regards to, uh, obtaining the specific permission or easement, um, from Richard Shink, because the town side of that road is by prescription, and so we want, and, and some of the project, uh, which would include stormwater, um, changing that culvert, um, may be on private property, so we gotta figure that one out. I thought you got a question, Prince.
I do, but I don't think it pays to ask you. Why, is this gonna be a city street or a town road when it's done?
It's a shared road.
Rural road.
It's a rural section road, but it's shared between the city and the town. We can go more into specifics later if you want. So I've been in, in discussion with El Rinka, the commissioner, highway commissioner at county, at, at the county in regards to County J, which needs to be reconstructed or repaired, um, and it sounds like it's on their, or what I've been informed of is that it's on their, their, uh, capital improvement plan for twenty twenty, um, and that is, uh, simple pulverize and, and resurface. Um, with that being said, it's an important part to the city to, to be able to connect our storm sewer, the new lift station, down to our main, uh, infrastructure, um, so we need to do some work there to prepare for that, and the county has agreed to, um, work with us on that, so the city would be then responsible for the utility work and the subbase material, they would then, you know, lay the base and then. So, uh, it makes, um, sense to keep on top of that, um, I talked to you, some of you about, uh, Main Street, County ninety-five, um, reconstruction, the DOT is, is looking to slot that for twenty twenty-six. Um, with that being said, there is a lot of work to be done.
Is it twenty twenty-six or twenty twenty-four?
Twenty twenty-six. Twenty twenty-five.
You know, something we don't know.
Well, I just asked the superintendent this week when we were, we did some fixing.
Yeah.
He said.
By the way.
Thanks. He said it's up to be, uh, redone in, in twenty twenty-four.
That could be, I mean, I don't know why he, the last he talked to, Dom, I talked to Rick Tomania, who was the engineer.
Yeah, don't take what I'm saying as gospel, I'm just telling you what I heard.
Yeah, by understanding, it takes about eight years for them to plan, so, if it's sooner than that, that's, that's great.
Benefit to us.
Is there any way we could lobby to get Main Street concreteed like Independence did?
I'm sure there's ways.
And I'll tell ya.
There's always ways to lobby.
I mean, it, you know what I mean, there has to be a way.
Well, at least the seventh section of it, yeah.
It sure is nice.
Yeah.
It looked good. Yeah, and it's.
It holds up.
And you're not gonna have what, what we had this spring.
Now saying, now saying that, I mean, because it is a city, you know, within the city, we do share some responsibility and costs for, uh, construction, so that, you know, we need to keep that in mind, not only just, uh, whether it's asphalt and concrete, but also thinking about, uh, aesthetics, you know, thinking about utility work, uh, and if you go a whole section, it's, it's a lot of, it's a lot of money.
Right, but the, the pavement between Blair and Whittle was put in there in nineteen fifty-three.
I get it.
That tells me it lasts.
I get it, yeah.
So what's this reconstruction, other than just? Your asphalt?
They, they've asked us what's under the ground, but we need to be replaced.
So you're not, you're not widening or you're not changing?
Curb to curb, keep the same, keep the same dimensions, but.
That was my question.
As long as they're opening the road, do we have to put, you know, new water sewers or electric, is there? Sure.
Well, that's, that's more, that's more to be discussed because right now they're trying to figure out whether it's, it's a simple resurface job or if it's
A total recon.
A total reconstruction. And if that includes sidewalks or not. You know, if it includes sidewalks, adding sidewalks, the city would be responsible for obtaining the rights away. Um, I know you got stuff under the sidewalk. You know, if we're going to redo certain parts of sidewalk, the question is, you know, how much of that is city, how much of that is responsibility of the? Of the, you know, property owner of the city. Um, and then in regards to the IT, uh, services for the city, um, we're looking at continuing the contract with, with PCC now, which is hard. Um, right now we're currently month to month. The contract dates month to month, so I've spoken with them and he's agreeable to continue that to the end of the year. Um, until we figure out what, what we want to do next with that position. Or that service. Um, one thing that we are looking or that I, I've been working in the last couple of weeks here is this regards to Green Bay Avenue. Uh, Green Bay Avenue is in need of repair. Um, in addition to that, I've had conversations with DOT. They would like to redo this intersection because it's not the best intersection. And what we've talked about was potentially, um, moving just this intersection in the whole Main Street project, um, so that it would become more, a more safe intersection. And as you know, the spur line is currently not used. Uh, my understanding is that the reason that that has not been removed yet is that there will be costs associated with moving that light closer to the main track. No, there's a, there's a crossing light there. So with that being said, I have reached out to some of the local business owners here and, and we are looking at options to at least reroute the truck traffic on particularly this portion of Green Bay, uh, which goes from Main Street to the city's parking lot. That's what it describes.
Or River Street would kind of line up with it, but.
Right. So that continues, uh, and we're thinking, you know, maybe the best way is to bring truck traffic behind on River Street instead of having a cut through this, this area here. Um, but more to come on that. And then in regards to the community center and the library, um, my understanding from my conversation with Lance Backstead is that they've currently caught up from their winter delays. Right now they're pouring the slab and, uh, concrete for, uh, the library portion of it. So the library portion of it is the, the last portion of the whole facility. Um, with that being said, I know that the library board is currently, I mean, the library is currently negotiating with, with, um, the school and the wanted center in regards to, uh, information technology, wifi, telephone services. So they're, they're, they're starting to get into the nitty gritties, uh, project. That's currently where we are with that. That's all I have.
Any questions, Bill? Joe, your last, your last hurrah.
Yeah, right?
One week left. On behalf of the council, Bill, I appreciate, you know, the last, what, three years, four or five years you put in at Arcadia, the many projects that you spearheaded and projects that got completed. Been an asset.
I'll be watching to see if.
You're going to watch over us, is what you're saying?
I'll be watching to see if that money comes through from the state.
I think everybody's cautiously optimistic because we've had the, you know, the rug moving many times under our feet and obviously the temperatures changed in Madison a couple of different times, so.
Yeah, so, yeah, these, these next couple of months will tell a lot, um, you know, a lot of money on the table, I guess.
Because they'll have, they've had public hearings.
They've had public hearings.
Around the state, they'll still have public hearings in Madison. Usually the budget should be up for open to here in June. Starts in July, however, last year I don't think it got passed till the end of August or September for the state budget, so.
And then the city should know about the CDPG grant also in July, so that's another million dollars to the project. Uh, but yeah.
Good job. Thank you.
Um, no public hearing scheduled this evening. We'll move on to item eight F, discussion of possible action on the provisional building permit for Washington ten unit apartment. Sorry to make you wait so long.
So you will see as part of your package, uh, the conditional approval from the state, uh, Department of City Services. We also have a set of drawings that are required, uh, attached. And, uh, we have Corey Walker in here who is looking to purchase the property from, um, uh, Tom Coleman, uh, who has developed it there previously. They do intend to construct a ten unit apartment building, uh, at the last site, uh, which is it's on the, it's on the north side of Faddle Drive, uh, and it's in, uh, in, right in the middle. So it's up in this, it's in the, probably to, um, on one side is an eight unit apartment building and on the other side is a twelve unit apartment building. So that's the last lot, um. Uh, plan was officially approved by the state and so the next, uh, step in this process is for the council to approve, uh, provision of apartment. Corey, do you have anything to add?
Motion.
Motion approved by Feltes, second by Isaac. Comments, questions? You're going to construct a guessing. As soon as you get everything approved.
Yeah.
Be done. Tim, you got color up there, you know?
Absolutely. So one, yeah, I mean, one thing to add is that, um, you know, as, as explained in the summary that the, the elevation of this, of this, uh, apartment building will be different from the, the ones that are currently up there. So this one does have a change in elevation halfway through the, the building. And that is because of, uh, fill issues pretty much up there.
Yeah.
Change in elevation and getting parking to work properly, um, you can probably go into that more than I can, but, um, it's, it's because we're dealing with conditions up there that are not, um, that weren't pretty good up there.
Did you check some grades there? Last couple weeks going from the, it could be the west side of the lot to the east side. It's probably three and a half to four, four feet difference in elevation. With that, we've still got to add some fill to the west side yet, if we can keep it flat. So we're going to be expecting three to four foot drop in elevation halfway through the building.
I, I know this is not a real building, but just so you know, I think you're pilots. Typically the city, you know, we hauled it, but it was really bad. I don't think you owned it yet. It wasn't, we were pilots, but. Your neighbor in property ownership.
I think they, they were, whoever was calling for the other rentals up there was a lot of pilot, we weren't.
Yeah, so I think, so we, and we, we've had, we had this conversation because there, there was flooding up there, this, this, uh, spring, and there was that large snow melt. Um, because the back of those doors, not on your side, but on the north, on the south side there. Um, and the, the Truman Way buildings, their back doors are right up, you know, to where that, that hill comes down and, um, the way that the, the stormwater control is, is situated up there is that it, you know, they have swales that kind of run around the building and then come onto the streets. Well, when the streets are pushed up with snow, um, and they're taking longer than melt than the, the snow on the field, that water is going to have nowhere to run. So that, that snow really needs to be taken off so that the water, the stormwater can get into our, our catch spaces.
So is that our deal? We need to do something more or the landowner does?
Well, I think, I think a lot of that snow that was pushed, a lot of that snow that was pushed up there was snow that was pushed from parking onto street and then we had to take that snow off the street and instead of hauling that snow offsite, it was pushed onto dead ends pretty much. So it needs to be.
I think some of that was done by the property owners or whoever was.
There needs to be, there needs to be a, a, a snow control plan up there and, and, you know, in regards to, uh, what snow, what's, you know, it, it's, it's going to be harder to determine, you know, what's now a private property versus what a, what a, you know, what's now a, uh, a road once, once it all gets pushed around. Uh, but there needs to be.
I mean, I hope, I'm sorry, uh, if the snowball goes through, you basically take care of the front, front of your property anyways, so your, your tenants can get out and the water can flow. So, you guys just go ahead and haul the streets anyways and then we clean it out.
Right, and I think what we did this year, we had that, that Sunday where we had a lot of snow, Saturday night, looped out it all to the center and then moved it.
Into trucks and hauled it up.
To get rid of it.
Like, if we do haul the snow, where would we take it?
Out to Europe.
There is an empty lot across the road from us.
Is that?
Well, now you, you, you would be responsible privately for your snow.
We got to find a place, I have to find a place to haul it to. I mean, here's.
We run into that issue all the time, finding places to put our snows and so.
Usually have enough of a hard car this year. We had a city, our school park, every open lot we could get, and it's the. Thanks, Mark. Thanks. There's a motion in the second, any other questions?
Sensala?
Yeah.
Isaac?
Yes.
Holsted? Conrad?
Yes.
Feltes?
Yes.
Motion carries. We can move on to item eight A approval for Mayor Eglon and Brooke Burgess on paperwork. Two hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollar commitment note for school construct, for the construction of the Arcadia Public Library portion of the community center to be repaid by school district special assessment payments that come in here. Also. Holsted, second by Isaac. Comments, questions? You guys were both on the board and that, that this came to. The original agreement that X amount of dollars for the repaving of Fairfield and the utilities getting paid into a city fund over ten years in the school district. That money is going to be used to help pay for the library portion of it, so. But they're only paying X amount per year, so we have to take out a short term, but. Color roll.
Isaac?
Yeah.
Holsted?
Yes.
Conrad?
Yes.
Feltes?
Yeah.
Sensala?
Yeah.
Motion carries. Item eight D, discussion of possible approval to add street light at the intersection of St. Joseph's Avenue and East River Street. Motion by Feltes, is there a second?
Yes.
By Conrad. Tim, do you want to give a little insight on that?
Yeah, I can, um, I can go into a lot of detail or I can keep it simple.
Give us a short version.
Okay, so at, at that intersection that is on the motion, there's no streetlight there, but if you go through that area, there's a bunch of old.
Thanks, Mark. Yeah, thanks.
There's a bunch of thirty-plus-year-old short aluminum poles with, with, which looks like top hat lights that, that. You know, I just have had those in the back of my mind for a couple of years and, and to do something different, um, so I met with, uh, Paul Halverson and we just decided that we're going to eliminate those old short poles, which I'm ninety-nine percent sure that the city's been paying for the electricity and the investment charge that's also lighting up the school area. So all those will come off your books and, uh, we're going to try and do it with the one light on the corner.
Are you ready?
Yes, sir.
Like what you had by my old house?
Absolutely.
That's unbelievable.
Those are nice lights.
I mean, it lights up.
Those are our standard lights now.
Wow.
Yeah. So we're going to add one, we're going to add the light that we're talking about, but we're going to get rid of seven old, uh, old, old structures that I believe were likely put there thirty to forty years ago when streetlight technology was a lot different.
When the portables were put in.
Because they used to have portables that lined the streets there.
Yeah.
The original portable.
Yep.
So in essence, it's going to cost us some money to put it in, but it's.
Well, it's not going to cost you any money to put it in, but, uh, at the end of the day, you guys are going to save. The installation of it is on our.
What are the lights on Main Street? Are those just?
So they're, most all of them are two hundred and fifty watt HPS lights, but we've got from between, I think it's the railroad tracks to, uh, to Jackson Street are now LEDs.
There's something like you're coming to town, it just seems like Main Street is just dark.
So when's the last time you observed that?
I haven't, well, a while.
Well, that would make sense then because throughout the winter we were, we were having some issues with this stretch that we're, that I just spoke of. So we, we did some experiments there and it lessened the light, it lowered the output of the lights. So there was about two months, two and a half months where that stretch right there was, was less lit and it was obvious. So that's when we invested in those LEDs, which are about five hundred bucks a piece.
Are they in now?
Oh, yeah, they've been in now for about a month. Well, you would definitely notice the way it was. Now I don't think that you'd notice it much, other than maybe the color of the light. Not the.
Pink color.
Yeah, they're just more greenish maybe. They're just, they're different there. They are different than the, than the high-pressure sodiums. But mid-winter, you would have definitely noticed that, um, at the sidewalk level.
Yeah, like I said, it just sometime you come in from that way, you come out, you come around the corner by Joe's house there and you look down Main Street, it just seemed like it was just dark.
Well, it was from detox to the railroad tracks, that block we were doing some experimenting with.
So you don't, them are, they are LEDs now?
That block is now, yes. They're not much, they're not much brighter than the, than the high-pressure sodiums.
What is that, like regular?
That's, 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 that's the basic streetlight we used to put in, HPSs. We converted to all LEDs now. Two years ago, something like that.
I think it's a good idea because they really light up.
Well, and, and hopefully a lot less maintenance.
Except for that one, all my miles and chimes in my bedroom window, that one could be darker.
We can arrange that.
Don't say that too loud. You'll be up there adjusting it, cranking it more towards your bedroom.
So basically this, this line item was to give us approval to install that light.
There is a motion in a second. Is there any other questions? Colorful color roll.
Holsted?
Yes.
Conrad?
Yes.
Feltes?
Yeah.
Sensala?
Yeah.
Isaac?
Yes.
Item eight C, discussion of possible approval of amendment of right of way. Easement to allow Butter Solar to construct or use an access road. So, motion by Feltes, is there a second?
Second.
I see Sala. Tim?
So this document or this line item basically allows Butter Solar or the solar company to occupy an easement that the Smiths gave to the city utilities back in about two thousand and thirteen or fourteen for us to put our high voltage or our transmission lines underground up, up through that, uh, area that's. But the easement specifically said the city utilities. This document allows the solar company to be in there with their high voltage cables as well.
Well, no, not their high voltage cable, not in this, not in this.
Or their access road.
Their access road on top of that. And it was the wish of the family, this news family to have all of that on one easement.
Comments, questions? Colorful color roll. Clerk will call it all.
Conrad? Feltes?
Yep.
Sensala?
Yeah.
Mezek?
Yes.
Holstead?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item eight B discussion, discussion of possible approval of license agreement to grant Butter Solar to install and maintain electrical lines in the right of way of Washoe Avenue.
So just, just quickly.
Motion by who was that?
Me.
By Feltes, is there a second?
Hopefully first, quickly.
Go ahead, I can.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
By Sensala.
So I just wanna say that the, the draft copy that is in your, your file has been updated with some language that we, we added, uh, to be agreeable with Butter Solar, um, and that language, if you wanna look at your agreement, uh, pause in the first paragraph on, on page two, near the, like, the first line up from the first paragraph, the end of the first paragraph. Our states to relocate licenses, electrical lines within the right of way of Washoe Avenue, uh, that was struck within the right of way of Washoe Avenue. And then again on page two, under subsection four, uh, midway through, um. Are you?
Yep.
You have a question? So halfway through Butter Solar had requested that we change, um, the default from, uh, for, of cure from thirty days to sixty days. We rejected that and provided additional language, um, that stated, um, thirty days. So I'm, I'm the third line down and about half, midway through that sentence, thirty days after written notice of such default from licenser to licensee, comma, and then this is where the new language is, provided however that in the event that it will reasonably take more than thirty days to cure the default. Licensees shall commence and cure the default within such thirty, thirty-day period and shall thereafter diligently pursue the cure to completion. So all of these are kind of just legal ease. Um, yeah, I wanted to give you an opportunity just to, to hear them, um, on page three, under section six. Um, this third line down, uh, consent may be without for any reason or no reason at all. That's the city's, uh, consent to Butter Solar that was struck. And then, um, notwithstanding with foregoing, the licensee shall be permitted without any additional prior written consent of the licenser, which is Butter Solar, to A, that we s- struck, uh, assigned this agreement to an affiliated successor entity. That was, okay, so the, the language that was added was Butter Solar wanted us to add, uh, that without our consent, they could assign it to, uh, an affiliated successor entity and we've, we've, um, rejected that, um, and then they added a language that, uh, they would be able to assign the agreement to a third party purchasing all or substantially all of the licensee's solar power generation facility in the city of Arcadia and be, uh, collaterally assigning the agreement for purposes of securing indebtedness or other obligations respecting the electrical infrastructure or solar project of the licensee. So they wanted to reserve the right to be able to assign this agreement to, um, third parties, uh, if they are bought out, uh, or if different party controls substantially all of their solar power generation facilities or in a situation in which they are trying to secure additional dollars towards the project. I know that was long-winded, I lost a lot of you. We do have a copy of that, if you wanna read it, I just wanted to provide that.
Well, I appreciate you bringing it up to date compared to what we got and what is being approved, would be two different things.
And we did just receive that, I believe, yesterday or today, um, so I apologize for that.
But basically, in a nutshell, this document allows them to put their high voltage cable in your street right of way and bring it into our, our building at the point of interconnection.
And you're good with that?
Yep. This, this also forces them to put it in conduit.
Nice.
Any other comments, questions?
Feltes?
He's out with a hurry.
Sensala?
Yeah.
Mezek?
Yes.
Holstead?
Yes.
Conrad?
Yes.
Nash is probably out. Item eight D discussion of possible, discussion of possible special meeting approval for myself and Oldman Fel- Feltes for the economic development. A meeting in Chicago, eight six.
I saw me.
I'll second. Motion by Holstead, second by Mezek. For future reference, maybe we want, when we change the rules or regulations in regards to pay, I may not be here, Joe may not be, none of us are, but we were gone.
Twelve hours, thirteen.
Twelve, fourteen hours for thirty-five dollars, we should look at it, like if it's an all-day meeting or something, then we have a tiered level. Not that I mind doing it for thirty-five bucks, but we had fun, didn't we, Joe?
Hey, you took one of the minivans today?
We can discuss that later. Is there a motion and a second?
Yeah.
Clerk will call it all. Just something to be thoughtful of.
Sensala?
Yeah.
Mezek?
Yeah.
Holstead?
Yes.
Conrad?
Yes.
Feltes?
Okay.
That's the host. You didn't try to break the. But I thought I won't do that, do that.
It's kind of rough.
You already had three.
I've been thinking that the whole meeting, eh?
You already had three houses.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
He didn't understand.
All right.
Uh, number nine, eight G discussion on city of Arcadia's spring cleanup, this is something we did last year. Did we do a default one, just a spring one?
I don't remember.
Yeah, we rented a dumpster or something and we charged, was it fifty dollars a truckload, twenty-five dollars a truckload?
Yeah, there's, there's always.
Obviously, we, we see more and more going into the ditches, it seems as well. The town of Arcadia, um, does a spring clean up, I don't know if they already had theirs.
No, I don't know if they have.
Yeah, I think.
I know, I know.
Maybe it was last week or. What, whatever.
Yeah, Glenn Wallace won.
And granted, we do have the dump open every other Saturday. Um, you know, which is, is all by wait to get rid of anything, but is it the feeling of, of us to do a, a spring cleanup? Have a dumpster at, whether it be probably at the city shop, that's usually the most convenient, that's how we did it last time, I think. And charge, you know, X amount for a truckload, maybe the same price it was last year, you know, we try to at least cover the cost of the dumpster at the person. Sometimes we run short, but.
Okay.
But it does.
Doing business.
It does, it is filling up and it's gonna get thrown somewhere.
Right.
I'd rather have it thrown somewhere where it shouldn't.
Right.
And we need to clean up what's around us.
Maybe we can probably try to push it a little more on Facebook or something, uh, we can check with Raleigh, if you guys aren't supportive, it will get Raleigh to schedule it, put something in the dust paper for an ad.
And I'm here to tell you from being an employee previous at the town hall, there was a lot of stuff that I know come out of the city. You know, I mean, because they have no place to go with it, you know?
Are you looking, um, Raleigh's, Raleigh's only comment that he wanted me to pass along, cause he wasn't sure he would be here tonight, is, you know, the last couple of times he's done it, um, it, it didn't cash flow for what, how, for how busy it was and who came, who came, Raleigh was the type to do it on a Saturday. Um, but maybe, maybe part of that's communication or getting it out there, but are you looking to do one yet now or wait till fall or?
I think if we could do one now and maybe then again in the fall personally.
Well, I think for future reference, if this is something that we're gonna plan on trying to do every year, try to get it into paper at the same time as everybody else, so that, like, the city knows, the city people know that, hey, they're going dumbing.
Right.
Rather than like you said, try and push it off to.
I mean, we don't have to call it a spring cleanup, we can call it just a cleanup day, whatever, but I think if we, we know there's a bunch of crap in people's yards, and if we're trying to help clean that up, we have to also do our part to try giving them a spot to put it instead of some of these dish.
My understanding is that the win, uh, spring cleanup, there's a lot of, it's easier, you allow more result than do a lot of all, but.
And it may be helpful, you know, like we did with CityWides every year, you know, they call and say Angela, you know, and I have to work with the chamber and we have to, you know, Korea Monday for having the, like, the rummage sales, so we just picked it was gonna be the last weekend in April and the last weekend in September, so that's just always it, so if, if, you know, if we can come up with a schedule that we're gonna do spring cleanup day here and fall cleanup day, try to stick to that and keep it unless there's, you know, something.
That's fine with me, I, I just think, I really think it needs to be done and obviously I think everybody else is the same.
Absolutely.
I, I would like to try doing it yet this year, plus, I mean, I, I go to the dump too, but the day that you fill it up and you go out there and it's not open or you're like, well, it's not the first or the third, so. So I don't think we, we don't need a motion, I, we can, Raleigh will figure something out.
Yeah, and then just advertise it.
We get pretty decent on our Facebook page, I would get pretty.
Even if you, you get the state bank to put it on their signs or. Yeah, every bit help, hardware hang.
Item ninety, approve bills in general, called it a month, it's sixty-four thousand, six hundred and ninety-six dollars and ninety-five cents.
Second.
Motion by Feltes, second by Mezek, any questions?
Adriano, for losing, that's a lot of.
I don't know, you know, he's in here for three hundred and forty dollars, it's for court, so I don't know how long it was and if it was pre-court stuff as well.
Kevin, if you hang out after the meeting, I can grab the invoice, I can grab it now.
I'm, I'm good.
Any other questions? Do you believe, do you believe like that, that it's done?
Mezek?
Yes.
Holstead?
Yes.
Conrad?
Yes.
Feltes?
Yeah.
Sensala?
Yeah.
Motion carries operator licenses, we have none scheduled. I think so.
No.
Well, there, well, there is two.
Ring the signal.
Hannah Jokergin's guy. An entertaining motion to prove.
I can.
Motion by Feltes.
I'm sorry, there was, was that Mezek?
Mezek, yeah. Martin Jeff.
Clerk will call it all.
Holstead?
Yes.
Conrad?
Yes.
Feltes?
Yeah.
Sensala?
Yeah.
Mezek?
Yes.
Motion carries item ten B discussion of possible approval to transfer the license from Mary Vouch to Joshua Vouch for the one sixteen North Grant Street.
Second.
Motion by Conrad, second by Sensala. Questions, comments?
Taxes and all that, utility are all up his mouth?
I will look at that. I just want, yeah, we do that every year, so I'll.
Well, cause he's still got a couple of things he gotta do yet.
Yeah.
Like someone that would probably want to approve it, right?
Well, that's what I'm, you know, that's not fair to him either. Is it, if he wants to run the place.
Well.
What's that?
It runs out soon, very.
Yeah, would just.
He can open it.
It wouldn't just be for this.
He just wants to keep the license.
He just wants to keep the license because that makes the building valuable. That's, that's words.
Do you, but do you want me to make a pending taxes and utility bill?
Well, isn't that normally?
That's standard, that's standard.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And he would have, cause he's gonna have to reapply, it's early for this month to finish it out, and then he's gonna reapply or isn't that, or he submitted his rea- he already submitted.
When will it be do again then?
July first, twenty nineteen.
So it's for this month, so then I'm good with the motion, I mean.
Okay, with no pending.
That's Danny, you're still okay with that?
Yeah.
Other questions?
Yeah, well, he's still gotta do this other stuff.
Clerk will call it all.
Conrad?
Yes.
Feltes?
Yeah.
Sensala?
Yeah.
Mezek?
Yeah.
Holstead?
Yes.
Motion carries. Future meetings, uh, availability for next Wednesday.
Sure. I can, but I'd rather not if I don't have to, because I'm supposed to go do that now, can't permit.
Um.
And I think that's kind of important.
Both of our.
You know what?
I'll get to carry the drug.
Both of our applicants for city administrator.
No, for the Red Cross.
Both of our applicants for city administrator are available at any time. They come, come here, do a interview with the council, utility commission joint, um, we both meet with department heads, do a tour of the city. So we're looking at roughly three hours, obviously, we're gonna get the person hired. The sooner the better, um, they're both coming from some distance. So I was thinking like four o'clock, man, that's gonna be tight for you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm done in white all that before.
Well, if we started at four, when you get here, you get here, I guess, at that point.
I mean, I'm, I'm okay with that, if you need to start earlier.
Well, I'm just thinking if it's three hours, it's, you know, seven, you still giving the other, yeah, if it's time to travel back, all that decent time. But I under- I understand, we're gonna do four thirty and split the difference.
My day is flexible.
I imagine. Got a lot going on.
I, I think you start it at four o'clock.
I, I just don't wanna feel as though anybody's left out.
No, not at all, but sometimes.
Cause what we would do is, we would have a person come in, do the interview with the utility commission, council, roughly figure an hour and a half, actually. Yeah, the jury really wouldn't want a half, half, two hours and have discussion after that.
You're in the driver's seat.
So I know, but when we talked earlier, we had a lot, I was thinking that.
Well, you know, we just, you know, wanna give them.
I mean, roughly, they could be out of here by, if we started at five, they could be out of here by seven o'clock.
I think maybe the best thing to do is, is.
Because if we're figuring an hour and a half for the utility and council, this is what I was thinking, the other person's meeting with the department heads and doing a tour of the city, then we flip-flop, so after an hour and a half or two hours, we're, we're done for us, discussion of however long it takes. We're three, let's do five o'clock.
Five o'clock.
Little less traffic in town. For tours. Is that okay?
I'll try and be here.
Thanks, Dan. We need at least four people?
Well, um.
Well, I mean, we, technically, we don't, cause we could always move it to hire it, but, yeah, it would be nice to have the most amount of people we could.
I'll see what I, like I said, I'm, I'm not sure.
Kind of important everybody should be here.
It is, it's very important.
It's going to be difficult, um, follow, they have a, they have their plan, they've done, baseball hasn't done a huge day, so he's not gonna be able to sleep and practice. Um, and he had asked to have it at six, but if you have it at six and our candidates are a fair amount distance away, you maybe wanna have them stay over, but you know.
And the utility commission wants to have it earlier. I really like her.
I don't know, he can get the batter together.
Five o'clock, five o'clock.
And that's at the Glanza Building?
That's what you wanna call it?
Sure.
What do we call it nowadays?
Going across from Detox.
Yeah.
Then the Glanza Building, you were knee-high to a ground.
All right, I already told Bill thanks, since this is his last meeting.
Yeah, thanks, Phil.
Mr. Chaney, thank you.
I'll be here for another week. Not answering your call or. In case there's a special meeting between now and that, went ahead and scheduled us only for appeals.
Get one more here.
Really?
Night four.
All right, I've inherited a motion to.
Second.
By Mezek, second by Feltes, clerk will call it all.